Good afternoon, everybody. I'm calling the regular meeting of the Planning Commission to order for Thursday, September 19th, 2019. Nine, nineteen, nineteen. No. Ms. Rydell, would you take role, please?
Thank you. Chair Wiskom?
Here.
Vice Chair Jordan?
Here.
Commissioner Campanella?
Here.
Commissioner Higgins?
Here.
Commissioner Lodge?
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz is absent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rydell. Okay, we're going to move on to item number two, which is preliminary matters, requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or addition of ex-agenda items. Mr. Busk?
Chair Wiskom, we have none.
Okay, thank you. And how about B, announcements and appeals?
I did want to announce that the project at 11 Anacapa, which was approved by the Planning Commission, was appealed by two separate parties to the City Council. A hearing date has not been set, but I will let you know as soon as one has.
Great. Thank you very much. I think-
Madam Chair?
Yes.
By May.
Commissioner Jordan, yes, go right ahead.
So, just in announcements, too, I'd like to invite Liz Smith up from the Creeks Department. I think most of you up here know that I started out many years ago with about three terms in the Creeks Advisory Committee and continue to support that. And I was very close to just wearing my Creek Week t-shirt today, but didn't think I could quite get away with that in this setting. So Creek Week starts this Saturday, I think, and I invited her in just to give us a couple minutes of what's, what to expect for the next week.
Welcome, Ms. Smith.
Thank you. So, as Commissioner Jordan said, my name is Liz Smith. I'm the Creeks Outreach Coordinator for the City of Santa Barbara, Creeks Division, and we are excited to announce and invite you all and your viewers and the community to our 20th Annual Creek Week Celebration, which begins on Saturday. So this event is coordinated with the Creeks Division, County Project Clean Water, the Cities of Galita and Carpinteria, UCSB, and Explore Ecology. We have 21 events scheduled for the week, which kicks off with Coastal Cleanup Day this Saturday, so we hope you'll come out to a local beach and help clean it up. There are 27 locations countywide to choose from. And just to highlight a few of the events that the Creeks Division is hosting on this Sunday, we have a tour on the Landshark, and I only have a couple spots left, so if you're interested, call me quick. On Wednesday, our Creeks Advisory Committee is going on a site visit, and the community is invited to join us at the Arroyo Borough Restoration at Barger Canyon. On Thursday, we'll be having a native planting along with Bartrand Real Estate Group at the Arroyo Borough Open Space down on Allen Road. And finally, next Saturday, along with County Project Clean Water and Explore Ecology, we'll be hosting a film screening in the park at Arroyo Borough County Beach Park. So we'll be showing the film Fish People, which is about several ocean users and their connection to the sea. So for more information, anybody can check out sbcreekweek.com or visit facebook.com/sbcreekweek. And I have some schedules to hand out to you. And also, this year, we are doing a coloring contest, so I'll hand out these postcards to you as well. If you want to color it in, post it on your social media, Instagram, Facebook, tag it with SB Creek Week, and we'll have some fun prizes at the end of the week. So, thank you so much.
Thank you very much for coming and for the update. And I know that probably Commissioner Jordan wants to say something, but it's, it's, okay. It's always a very successful week, and your division works very, very hard, and it's amazing what you do, what you get accomplished during this week, and the awareness you get out to, to other, to the community about the importance of our creeks, so.
Okay, tucked me into it. What's interesting about this city is when I travel around on water issues, that we are the envy of everybody else in this county and of much of the state, due to the fact that our, both our residents and our business community had the foresight now almost 20 years ago to essentially tax themselves for the benefit of this on top of our TOT tax. So, I'm making up numbers, but that generates whatever, four or $5 million a year, and goes into an enterprise fund that is just for watershed improvements. And there are many, many other communities in the state that wish they had this flexibility and, and the ability to apply those funds to improvements in those areas and can't do it. And we're so blessed both to have that financial flexibility and a great staff to do that.
And I'll just add on to that, since Commissioner Jordan mentioned the, the money that goes, that's earmarked particularly for creeks and watersheds. You have, as a division, have done a tremendous job over the years, and I remember this from my years on the Parks and Recreation Commission, where you have leveraged that with, with, you know, grant money, just, just tons of grant money that you've gotten. So I think it's, it's had a success in that, in that realm also. So we congratulate you on that. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much. Can I hand these off?
We're on to item number 2C, review and consideration and action on the following draft Planning Commission minutes and resolutions. So we have, let's just take them separately, just in case someone has any comments on First one is Planning Commission minutes from September 5th, 2019. Does anyone have any corrections, or if not, I entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay, so moved by Commissioner Thompson, seconded by Commissioner Lodge. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll be abstaining from all three of these, Ms. Rydell. I was out of town.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, so abstention by Commissioner Jordan. Okay, and then the next one is item number two, Planning Commission Resolution Number 013-19. It's a zoning text, zoning text amendments to the Zoning Information Report Program. Does anyone have any, any corrections on that? Okay, to entertain a motion on-
Move its approval.
Second.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Lodge, seconded by Commissioner Thompson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that, with Commissioner Jordan abstaining, that carries unanimously. Okay, with, with the exception of Commissioner Jordan. Okay, and the third one is Planning Commission Resolution Number 014-19 for 11 Anacapa Street. Does anyone have any additions, corrections to that? Okay, I'd entertain a motion on that.
Move its approval.
Second.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Lodge, seconded by Commissioner Thompson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed, and one abstention from Commissioner Jordan. Okay, great. Thank you very much. So now we're going to move on to comments from members of the public pertaining to items not on this agenda. Due to time constraints, each person is limited to two minutes. So we have one slip from Ms. Gott. So come on up.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I don't know if you are aware of it, but there is a proposal by the Salvation Army to turn a R2, a zoned piece of property over at 15 South Aliso's, into a place that will actually incorporate a manufactured home for 10 units, for 10 individual bedrooms, and then also have two individual cottages. Now, my understanding of R2 is that that means that there are two units. But somehow, in 2017 or 18, this project actually had a duplex permitted, sandwiched in between these other two units. I don't really understand why. It doesn't appear to be in the AUD zone, but nonetheless, that is what we've got right now. The project is proposed, as I said, by the Salvation Army to actually have individual beds rented out, one in a 10-unit manufactured home, and then, excuse me, 10 in a one-unit manufactured home, and then four in the two cottages. That actually represents 14 leases. It is not a state-owned facility or licensed facility, and I don't understand how this doesn't require a conditional use permit, because under group residential, it does. And if you look at what the definition of group residential is, and what the findings are, to actually ensure that this is group residential and actually gets a CUP, I can't figure it out. No one has been able to explain it at all. I would appreciate it if the Planning Commissions would take an active look at this particular project, because we are displacing two homes that used to be affordable for our workforce. And we are going to be putting in individuals that have just been taken off of the street and placed in these, in these bedrooms, and there will be no on-site supervision whatsoever. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That concludes general public comment, so I'm closing that, and we'll move on to item number three, which is the application of John Kaiden Dahl, DUDAC agent for Verde Ventures LLC, property owner of 35 North Caillac Caesar Chavez, OM1 Ocean Oriented Light Manufacturing, and SD3 Coastal Overlay Zones, Local Coastal Program, Land Use Plan Designation, Ocean Oriented Industrial. So the project consists of a new coastal development permit for warehouse buildings that were previously approved by the staff hearing officer on April 30th, 2014, and a conditional use permit to allow the building materials supply company and lumberyard to operate out of the said buildings at 35 North Caillac Caesar Chavez. So we have two discretionary applications. Again, I repeat, the coastal development permit. This is a, in the appealable and non-applicable jurisdictions of the city's coastal zone, and a conditional use permit to allow development in the OM1 zone to be used as building materials supply company and lumberyard. So that concludes that. Ms. Brodessen's here to give the staff report, and that will be followed by a presentation by the applicant, and then we'll open it up for public comment. We'll have Commissioner questions first, probably along the way, but then we'll open it up for public comment, and after public comment, it'll be back to the Commission for discussion and action. Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Chair Wiskom and Commissioners. As you said, this project is located at 35 North Causer Chavez. Here's an aerial or a vicinity map showing the project's site just south of, south of the freeway and on the corner of Caesar Chavez and Yan and Ali Street. And this is an aerial slide showing the vicinity of the project. It's located across the street from the Rescue Mission, and it's adjacent to the Vercal Building to the southeast, and the city's wastewater treatment plant to the southwest. The project description is a request to operate a building materials supply company and a lumberyard within an existing industrial building site, and it requires a conditional use permit in the OM1 zone, and also a coastal development permit for the, because it's at the coastal zone. The property was historically operated as a use, a mix of uses such as carpentry businesses, a hard towing business, storage of building supply materials, and multiple mechanics. In 1986, a portion of the M1 zone was rezoned to OM1, which is Ocean Oriented Light Manufacturing, and this was done as part of the city's implementation of the local coastal plan. The purpose of the OM1 zone was to provide the opportunity for appropriate ocean-dependent uses and ocean-related uses to be located in close proximity to the harbor and the wharf. All existing uses were allowed to remain as legal non-conforming at that time. In 2014, the staff hearing officer approved a development plan and a coastal development plan to rehab the existing buildings. The next few slides just kind of show what was there before the coastal development permit and after, so you can see the top slide shows the existing buildings. In the front is the office building that remains, and the bottom slide shows the new warehouse behind. And this slide also shows the building, I think it's Building C on the exact, directly on the corner of Yan and Ali and Caillac Caesar Chavez. And this is another view of the interior building. At the top, you can see how it was in 2014, and below is what it looks like now after the coastal development permit. In recent history, the project was approved by the Planning Commission, a coastal develop, I mean, a conditional use permit, to allow the building materials supply company and a lumberyard use to operate on the site. That decision was appealed by Mark Massara in January of 2019. In April, the City Council unanimously denied the appeal and upheld the Planning Commission's decision, and the council agreed that the Planning Commission's findings were correct, that the use was compatible with ocean-dependent or ocean-related uses, and that the property would have no feasible economic value if limited solely to ocean-dependent or ocean-related As stated, until 1986, this area of the city was owned M1, Light Manufacturing, and the OM1 zone was established in 1986 as part of the city's implementation of the LCP. The area covered by the OM1 zone extends approximately from Garden Street to Caillac Caesar Chavez between Highway 101 and the railroad tracks, and totals approximately 52 acres. The zoning map shows where the OM1 zone is located in the city and the surrounding zones. The coastal zone land use plan map also shows the area designated as Ocean Oriented Industrial. Allowed uses in the OM1 include things such as boat sales, storage and repair, marine storage, public parking lots, sail manufacturing and repair, seafood processing and wholesaling, and other ocean-related uses deemed appropriate by the Planning Commission. Additionally, pursuant to Santa Barbara Municipal Code, Chapter 28, uses that are allowed in the M1 zone can be permitted, subject to special findings and the issuance of a conditional use permit. This allowance was specifically included in the ordinance when the OM1 zone was initially proposed in 1986, due to concerns raised by the public that there were not, there would not be enough demand for ocean-related uses in the area, and also that they were concerned that existing uses would not be allowed to remain. So in order to, for the Planning Commission to approve a conditional use permit, the use must be found compatible with ocean-dependent or ocean-related industrial-type uses, and the property would have no feasible economic value if limited solely to ocean-dependent or ocean-related. For today's hearing, the applicant has provided an economic feasibility study prepared by Michael Arnold, which is attached to the staff report, and it is to substantiate the applicant's concerns that there would be no economic value if the buildings on the site were limited to, again, to solely ocean-oriented. So in conclusion, if the Planning Commission can, can determine that the project is consistent with the Coastal Act and the LCP, and can make the findings that the use is compatible in this zone, and that there would be no feasible economic value, then staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the conditional use permit and the coastal development permit, and make the suggested findings, and subject to the conditions of approval in Exhibit A. And that concludes staff's presentation, and we have the applicant's team here also to make a presentation.
Thank you very much. I think I want to turn it over just for one minute to Ms. Ostringer, please.
Thank you, Chair Wiskom.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I just wanted to make a statement that I know this has been before you earlier, and you've made a decision, but this is a separate action, and it needs to have all the comment and be treated as if it had never been before you. So look at it with those eyes. And also, I wanted to point out that there was an error in Exhibit H of the staff report, and some LUP policies were identified as being applicable to the project, which they are not. And those policies are 2.14, 2.17, 2.18, and 2.116. So make a note of that. Those should not be applicable. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ostringer. Appreciate that clarification. Okay, so staff presentation, I mean applicant presentation, sorry. I'm a little bit discombobulated. At any rate, if you'd introduce yourself, because it's different from last time, and this is a new hearing, so, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Wiskom and Commissioners. I'm Beth Collins from Brownstein, and I represent the applicants. The owners are here, Mark Rabatton and Jaime Malgosa are here, as well as the rest of the project team. If you have any questions, we will be here to answer them for you. Could you put up my PowerPoint?
Okay, I'm stopping the clock. I failed to tell you, you have 20 minutes for a presentation, okay? Thank you. And I'll just wait till you're ready.
Okay, I'm ready. And the presentation today, it is a new application. We do have the letter from the Coastal Commission that came in. That's the reason I supplemented the record with the letter that I think you all have had access to as well, because we were trying to respond to the requests of the Coastal Commission. And the same, we're here. I'm going to lay it out, just so that we are sure that there's plenty of evidence in the record to support the findings that staff have, have recommended, and hopefully the findings that, the altered findings that I proposed in my letter. So, a short permit property history. As was laid out in the staff report, it was zoned in the 80s as OM1. When it was purchased in 2010 by the owners, which Verde Ventures, that's the name of the company, it had an auto repair shop on there, a cabinet maker, there was an office in that small adobe, and there was, shortly after they bought the property, the owners own Bedrock Building Supplies, and so they also stored some building supplies there. At the time, they bought the property, they were in a dispute with their landlord, looking to extend their lease, but they hadn't agreed yet, so they were looking for an alternate location for Bedrock Building Supply. And so that's where they, you know, the property caught their eye. At the time, it was legal non-conforming. In other words, even though it was zoned to OM1, there had been legal non-conforming uses, so it was a potential location for their business, and so that's why they, they bought the property. Then by the time they bought the property, they worked it out with their landlord, they had got to extend their lease, and so then they kept the businesses there operating, and they did store some supplies. So here's some photos of about, that were taken around 2010 by architect Bill Wolfe. And they show the Yan and Ali frontage here on Rescue, it's right across from the Rescue Mission, for those of you who, just to orient you. This, the Yan and Ali frontage, you can see the car repair, you can see the old adobe on the left. Go to the next slide. There's a picture again of the old adobe, and we're just driving down Yan and Ali now. Next slide. Okay, there you can see the building supplies, the slabs of rock there that are stored. So those are the building supplies. Let's keep going. Here's a zoom in on the auto repair business that was there, and you can see the buildings are older, it was an older facility. And next slide, yep, those are hydraulic lifts in there, who, at the, at the time that they purchased the property, those hydraulic lifts had been around for quite some time and been limping along, and there was a lot of actual contamination around there, so there was abatement associated with having to remove those lifts. You can keep going, yes, this is the woodworking facility right on the corner, there's a Vercal Building. Next slide. And this is the shot down Caesar Chavez, and you can see the Vercal Building in the background. Next slide. Okay, so going on with the permit history, the buildings were dilapidated, but they were usable and being used, and that was the vision when they bought the property, that they would keep using for legal non-conforming uses. But after a little while, it became clear that the buildings were not going to be serviceable. And so in 2012, so two years after they bought, they had a pre-application meeting with the city, and they met, asking for both a CDP to improve the buildings and a CUP to repair the buildings and have a building supply use. This would give them flexibility to be able to move their business in the future. Eventually, they ended up just with a CDP being issued. That was issued in 2014, and now the Coastal Commission claims a NOFA, Notice of Final Action, was never sent on that CDP. But at the time, nobody knew that, and they went along and they constructed the buildings, and Radius began marketing the property in April of 2018, and they were, because they were getting no interest as OM1 use. Of course, when they had the CDP issued, they were limited then to an OM1 use for those new buildings, because they did not also get a CUP at that time. So now they're going through that process with you all. So there was a new CUP application that was, we applied for in September of 2018. That was after the NOFA, oh, during that time, that's when the NOFA issue was raised, that's when Massara, Mark Massara appealed to the council in January 2019. The RAP case, remember, this is a contaminated site, so this is our media action plan is being done all this time. The RAP was finally closed in February 2019, and then now, we reapplied for both a CDP and, I should say, a CUP in July 2019. And the whole purpose of this is to address both the existing development that the Coastal Commission claims is not pursuant to a CDP, and then also to allow for a CUP, because we've had no luck. We tried to have the property on the market, and we have not been able to have any OM1 uses, and so therefore, we are asking for the CUP. Okay, here's the site now. Yan and Ali frontage, we can flip through these pretty quickly. There's the old adobe or little building, I call it the adobe, but that may be inaccurate. It's got bricks. Anyway, then on the corner there is Caesar Chavez, you have the new buildings. Let's go to the next slide. Yep, now here's Caesar Chavez. Next slide. Okay, this building B here, I'm sorry, building C, that was, that's actually storage only. So there's no habitance, habitation in that building. In other words, it couldn't be a store, it couldn't be a retail facility. It was built, the flood regulations are different if you have just storage, and it was, to be honest, a cheaper way to build it. They didn't need to have people, an office in there, for example, and so therefore, they took the more cost-effective route and just built it as storage. Next slide, there shows the Vercal Building. Next slide. Yep, next slide. There you go. Okay, and there are the two new buildings. Okay, so that kind of orients you, shows you where the site is today, for those of you who hadn't seen it before. So let's go to the next slide, which talks about economic feasibility. So this is new information. You had some economic feasibility information last time, the last application was before you, but now we have beefed that up at the request of the Coastal Commission. So we had the letters from the Radius Group and other brokers before. Now we have an economic feasibility report from Mike Arnold, who's here, and if you have any questions here, here in the front row. He's an appraiser, certified appraiser here in the community. We also supplemented that report last night with a supplemental report from Mr. Arnold and some additional information. And the reason we did that is because we got the Coastal Commission letter. We also had a meeting with the Coastal Commission on Tuesday to try to work through their questions and explain the economic feasibility report, and so we had a preview of what a letter might say. So that's why we prepared the economic feasibility supplemental report. So we have a few scenarios, and one might ask, why are you doing scenarios? That's not really technically required, I believe, by the findings. The question is, are the buildings that are there economically feasible? That's actually, I believe, the test, but the Coastal Commission raised the question, well, did you overbuild? You know, or you were trying to build a lumberyard, and that's not an OM1 use, so prove to us that an OM1 use would be economically unfeasible. So we did that, and we looked at both the as-built scenario, but then a hypothetical scenario where you just have an outdoor boat storage yard. The reason we did that is, it's not a new building, it's the cheapest, easiest approach to developing the site. So both scenarios lose a lot of money. None of us would want this investment. I'm sorry, guys, but it's true, none of us would want this investment. There's significant, the losses per year are just money lost, okay? That's money negative. That means they're paying it out to a mortgage, or insurance, or other things, and, and that's assuming they're receiving the market rent, okay? And then, if you consider, they spent millions of dollars in an investment, okay? There's a reasonable investment-backed expectation of 5% in this community. So a reasonable real estate investor would expect, and would have considered this a loss of $220,000 and $215,000. But after the meeting with the Coastal Commission- But, after the meeting with the Coastal Commission on Tuesday, we thought about, well, what if they got the property for free? Because it was raised. Did you pay too much for the property? Okay? So that's why in my letter, we proved, no, we did not pay too much. In fact, we paid $50 per square foot, where a lot of the other properties are going for 70 to 140. But then, we took it a step further. What if we got the property completely free? Of course, this scenario doesn't exist in the world, at least in my world. But, we nonetheless did the analysis, and even then, they are losing money every year, under either scenario. Okay? So you can ask, how did we come up with this economic feasibility study? So the next page kind of walks through the steps that Mike Arnold and the team took. First, he did research into the OM1 uses. He talked to the Commercial Fisherman of Santa Barbara, Chris Voss, extensively. Chris Voss went to his office. They spent a lot of time working with us on this report, giving us real market information. We also talked to brokers and others in the community, including the West Marine use, and the Wright property, trying to find out more about the Wright property, where there's some boat storage, finding out about the Bond property, where there's some fish processing, that's in my letter. We also, there was, we looked at the site. Mike Arnold looked at the site. Then we had a big meeting, multiple meetings, with the contractor, and the architect, and the whole permitting team. The Steve Campbell, who was in charge of the remedial action plan. We all met together and talked about, well, what could be done? Okay, that were, the Coastal Commission's asking and saying, we overbuilt the site. What else could we have done? What would be the, in essence, cheapest thing that we could have done with this property? After everyone weighing in, because one scenario that was raised was, well, why wouldn't you just scrape the property, throw down some rock, and be done? In fact, you can't throw down, you can't just scrape. Once you scrape more than 500 square feet, you trigger Tier 3 stormwater regulations. You also can't just throw down rock on dirt, especially contaminated dirt, that's within 100 feet of a sidewalk. And this is a corner lot. Okay? So, there were a number of constraints that are particular to this site, that this outdoor boat storage was the best and cheapest approach. But as you will soon see, it's actually not very cheap. We also sought construction estimates and other development costs from project team members, sought information about the cost of contamination and reimbursements, and then looked into property tax, insurance, management, debt service. Okay? That all went into the report. Next page. Okay, so what did we learn? Still, there's a letter from the broker that explains that the property's been marketed since April of 2018, and no one has sought to rent the property for an OM1 use at any rate. Two, we learned that no OM1 uses pay rents similar to those required to create feasible economic use of the property. So, the rent to break even, here with the as-built scenario, is $2.73 per square foot. Or for outdoor boat storage, an unbelievable 783 a space. Market for the boats, there's 180 a space. We used 200 a space in our analysis. 783 is obviously not going to have anybody trying to rent us, rent a boat space at that rate. So, these numbers are conservative, also because these guys are in the building industry. Right? They did most of the project owner-builder. They couldn't do the contamination owner-builder. They did that through a general contractor. But the rest of the project, they just subbed out themselves. So any of us, or most of us, would have had to pay much more. In addition, they got all their building supplies at cost. Right? Because they have connections in the industry. So all of us would have paid much more to build the as-built scenario. In addition, in the analysis, we gave credit Chevron. They went after Chevron for the remediation. They got money back for some of it. We took credit for the money that they got back. Most, when they bought the property, they didn't know they would get the money back. With other PRPs or potentially responsible parties, they might not have gotten the money back. They also paid attorney's fees to get the money back, but that's not, we didn't take credit for that in the analysis. So this all goes to why those are very conservative numbers. And so then, the question is, well, will anyone pay 783 a space for a boat? Answer, no. What about 273? That looks possible. Answer, no. So let's go to the next slide. And, so you will see in the economic feasibility report, and actually, I don't have those rent numbers in here. The economic feasibility report explains, the West Marine use is rented out right now. What is it, up to $1.86 a square foot?
That's allowing for expenses on top of the actual.
Yes. So, the most that is being paid for a nearby marine use that we're aware of is $1.86 a square foot. And that's for the West Marine store. And remember, building C isn't even built for, as an occupiable building, like the West Marine store. So that's an inflated number. In our analysis, we use $1.75 a square foot as a commensurate rent. And it's, that's obviously nowhere near $2. Could you go to the previous slide, sorry? $2.73. In fact, there's nobody in town that is paying $2.73 a square foot for ocean-related use, that we are aware of. Okay? All right, so let's go to the next slide. Oh, sorry, went back. Yep. Okay, so what are the cost drivers? And why is it so expensive for this lot in particular? And I've gone through some of the features, and I'm aware of my time, so. Now, one, the demo, which include the abatement of the vehicle hoists. And remember, these are factors that are just unique to this property. Okay? And we have to remember that the question here is not, is there no demand in the world for OM1 use? Of course, if it was a one penny or free, there would be demand. The question is, does the demand meet what the investment would be required for this piece of property? We're not asking about the entire OM1. We're just saying, this piece of property. And why is a CUP appropriate for this piece of property? And there are a few, we learned, reasons. The demo that was required, this Tier 3 stormwater regulations are a killer. Because the way that that property was graded, and this was done back in the day, it was graded to totally drain off the site. Right? It was totally paved to grade off, or drain off the site. So what they had to do was demo all of that concrete, and then regrade. They also had to build three stormwater retention basins. Now, remember, you can't just grade contaminated soil. Right? You have to scrape it, remove it, bring it, and dispose of it in a careful manner. Then you have to import clean soil. Okay? This is, this is, all adds to expense. There was permeable pavers required, associated with the retention basins. Also, you can't, remember the, and Robert Gilchrist could talk about this for hours, and has, the complexity of this site in particular. So I hope, I know I'm not doing it as just as you could do, but the water here, the water table's very high, and you have to segregate the contaminated water system from the stormwater. So you have to capture the stormwater, treat it, but keep it segregated from the high water table. Right? So it's really complicated, actually even to build a parking lot. And a parking lot is what's required, because we can't just throw down a bunch of gravel on the site after we've disturbed 500 square feet. Tier 3 stormwater regulations are triggered. Also fun, it's a flood zone. And these regulations amped up while they were in the process. So they actually had building drawings that were for the older regulations, and then they had to redo them as these regulations became more challenging. There's also liquefaction, it's a liquefaction zone. There was the contamination, caissons and other reinforcements. The reinforcements of the, even for parking lots, that doesn't crumble with the liquefaction zone and the high water table. And then, other fun thing, and again, this is just unbelievable, these guys got the short stick with this property. There was an earthquake back in the early 1900s. Well, they dumped a bunch of that debris on this very site. And so while they were digging and trying to build here the stormwater retention basins, they discover a bunch of the earthquake debris. So that means they have to dig even farther down, and they have to take even out more contaminated soil. So it's just an example. These are all reasons why this site in particular is not appropriate for an OM1 use, and why we believe we should qualify for a CUP. All right, let's go to the next slide. So this-
Ms. Collins, you're, actually, you're out of time. So I'll give you another, what, two minutes to wrap up?
Sure.
Is that, is that-
Yes.
Is that enough time for you?
We will see. I will make every effort to do so. I'm trying to, again, not just speak to you, but also, of course, the Coastal Commission. So, I want to make sure that we have explained. Okay, so, key points. LCP amendment is not required for this project. That was raised in the letter. We have a C, an LCP. The Coastal Commission certified it. It builds in this mechanism, this very mechanism, as a safety valve for us, or property owners like us. Next, we have submitted evidence and beefed it up, and we have some proposed additional findings for you that are attached to the letter I provided today to even further beef up and respond to the Coastal Commission's request for more information in the findings and more justification. And then separately, as you know, the city is pursuing alternate methods to address the issue of the ocean-dependent uses. The Harbor Commission has an initiative ongoing. We can talk more about that if you're unaware. Okay, next slide. Oh, well, that was good. Let me make sure that I made, and I even, at the APA Planning Conference this last weekend, spent an extensive time with Dave Davis, asking him more about the OM1. And he affirmed with me, for me, exactly this, that it was a safety valve that was built in for landowners for, and I'll say, he did not say this, but I will say, for landowners in a situation just like this. So with that, I thank you for your time, and I ask that you please agree with the STACK recommendation, and we ask that you approve the project.
Thank you.
With the modified findings.
Thank you very much. I will remind you, we are not the Coastal Commission, so you're for the Planning Commission. So, you know, some of those arguments, perhaps, you could say. But, okay, we're going to move to Commissioner questions, first of all.
Chair Wiscom, if I may.
Yes, Ms. Austrian.
Thank you. Ms. Collins referenced modified findings that were in her letter. The staff and I have reviewed them, and we, if the Commission wants to make those findings, or can make those findings, we have no objection to them.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. I'm glad to have that, I think we're all glad to have that information. Okay, I think we'll start with Commissioner Campanella. I think your light was on first. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Collins? The slide where you had as-built compared to the boatyard, could you put that up, as far as the financial comparisons?
I think there were a few, but is this the one you're referring to?
Let's see, okay, yeah. So, as-built, just so I'm clear, as-built is not, is it the current building, or as previously was built? Before it was torn down?
Oh, good question. As-built is actually as-built right now. It is, so with the current buildings that are on there, so the refurbished buildings, that is the as-built scenario.
Okay, so I'm right, maybe I'm reading this wrong, but isn't there just a small difference in the 5% return on investment between the as-built building, or if it were outdoors boat storage?
Yes, it's true. All, because it costs so much to build. So the difference in the rental rate from $1.75 on the as-built scenario to $200 per boat space is, it ends up, you're right, coming out very close. But both of them are in the hole. That's the main point, is anybody who's doing either is losing money.
I think, I might be wrong about this, but I think Commissioner Campanella's looking at how close the two numbers are. The outdoor boat storage assumes the demolition of the as-built buildings. Is that correct?
The outdoor boat storage assumes the demolition of those old dilapidated buildings. Okay?
Oh.
Okay, as-built is now-
But you have a graph in your, you have a diagram in the plans that shows the layout, and there's no buildings there for outdoor boat storage. There's no buildings there anymore. So to do the boat storage, they'd have to be demolished. The existing buildings would have to be demolished.
That is correct.
And I thought that was what was in the economic feasibility study. I'm just trying to clarify why I think those numbers are so close.
Chair Wiscom, I think what it was is the previously, it assumes the previously existing buildings were demolished, and that the current buildings were never constructed.
Okay, that's, that's a good clarification. Okay.
So it's, we were doing a thought experiment, and the reason was, is the Coastal Commission said, well, when you bought in, or when you went into the city in 2012, you knew that it was an OM1 use. Why didn't you just propose a boatyard, instead of what you did build and propose, propose and build? And so we're comparing the two scenarios as if we had gone back in time in 2012. And the one path was what we did, which was the as-built. And the other path is demo the old dilapidated buildings, just keep the adobe, what I call the adobe, and then have a parking lot.
Okay, so let me just, I think I have that. An alternative, if you go back in the, I guess, once you tear the building down, is that the end of that analysis? Or is there analysis, what if you had kept the, bought the property, kept the building, didn't use the whole property for boat storage, but used it for some other intended use? Would those numbers come out different than just outdoor boats storage on a cleared lot?
It's a good question. But the reason we didn't analyze that is because the buildings were so dilapidated, they were unsafe. So we could not just go and retrofit them. Instead, we were told we need to rebuild buildings. And so what we rebuilt is what's there and as-built. And then there's another scenario where we could have built anything else. Right? Which is anything else. And, but the simplest thing that we could have done was build a parking lot. Right? And so that's why we compared the two. We compared what we built, which the Coastal Commission was suggesting may have been overbuilt, and we compared a parking lot, which is the least amount of development that a person could do with that site. And we kept the one building that was working. Okay?
Okay. So I'm just trying to think here, at some point during the life of this property, that existing building would have had to been, if we look into the future, that existing building is not going to stand up forever. And at some point, it would have to be replaced by something. So it had a short life on it, and so what you looked at, just looked at these, in, let's say, reasonable judgment, in looking at comparisons, one was not retaining the building for some period of time to have that building comply with the OM1 zone as far as utilization, because it was not really feasible to be kept in the future. Is that correct?
Right. And I guess the other really fundamental thing that I should have said before that, the reason we don't analyze the buildings as they are, and keeping those buildings, because if we had, we would have a legal nonconforming use. We wouldn't need to be here to ask for a CUP. The only reason we have to ask for a CUP is because we're doing construction on the site. And so that's why our analysis involves construction. Either construction of the as-built, construction of a parking lot, and the results of this construction, the parking lot, tells you, anything in between would have been economically infeasible. Once you get rid of your legal nonconforming, you are in infeasible land. And, on this property. Does that make sense?
Okay, thank you. A question for either staff or our city attorney. The additional specific findings that are required to grant the request to do something other than allowed in the OM1 zone, the use is compatible with ocean-dependent or ocean-related uses, and no feasible economic value, et cetera. Is that Coastal Commission words, or is that words from our local coastal plan? That requirement?
That requirement is from our municipal code, which is certified, is basically the implementation of our land use plan. So it's, it's both. It's what we require as a city, but it's been approved and blessed by the Coastal Commission.
Okay, but the Coastal Commission, in their regulations, does or does not have similar language in this type of event? language in this type of event? Or is it generated by us with Coastal Commission approval?
I don't know if they have similar language. I know that this was what, what they approved, but if the, on their side, what they have, I do not know.
Okay, so the letter that we have in file, September 18, 2019, they are, let's say, opining, giving us an opinion of compliance with our local coastal plan, what we said. I'm assuming that for the moment. So what we're dealing with is our regulations, not so much the Coastal Commission regulations?
That is correct. You're applying our municipal code for both the CDP and the CUP.
Okay, so I have a question on the wording, I guess, then. We need a feasible economic value, start, we need to study a competent evidence to be objective, which includes no present or future demand for ocean-dependent or ocean-related uses. So it's no, if I'm putting the words together correctly, no future demand. So how is one supposed to make that determination as we sit here today about future demand?
I think what Ms. Collins was trying to get at with her presentation is that for this particular site, just based on the site conditions and the uniqueness of the property that there, she, the appraiser has concluded that there is no future use for it as well, for marine storage.
Okay, so that's something, that's a little more, let's say, a little more we'd have to, I won't say believe in, but a little more we'd have to be convinced on rather than current. We have to, in our own minds, look at the, look at what's going on now, and possibly that reflects what's going to happen in the future as well, I would presume.
I think that's if-
I can just speak briefly to that, which is, you know, the drivers, the cost drivers, most of them to do, are to do with regulation. In my experience over the last 10 years, 20 years, 30 years, regulation is not getting less stringent, it's only increasing, and it's increasing cost. The Building Code, FEMA, right, tier three stormwater is not going to go away. And so that's where I think you do have a basis to make the finding, because you know the regulations that are in place today make it economically infeasible for this property owner to have, be limited to OM1 uses, and that you can predict also that that will not change, and that, in fact, based on experience, regulations are probably only going to become more stringent, and building will only become more expensive. I mean, think about the tariffs and everything, right? A bunch of things that we don't control usually are driving up prices.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Campanella. Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you. I have a question for staff. In 2014, the city issued a CDP, and now the Coastal Commission staff says they never received it. Now, we all know that a tight bureaucracy like the California Coastal Commission would never lose a document, so my question is, why would we just send something off in first-class mail and never receive any kind of feedback? Is this considered best practice? Why not get a certified or registered letter when we send stuff to them so that you get a signature back that they actually received it?
Commissioner Campanella, that is a good idea. Our ordinance requires first-class mail, and that's what we've been doing. However, we have since switched to certified mail just to avoid this coming up in the future.
Okay, good. At least we learned from our mistakes, and maybe not to believe the California Coastal Commission completely.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Jordan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For staff, I'm kind of confused about the prior-built scenario and the costs that were associated to that. You give me too much information, and I start asking questions. So if you just would have demolished the old buildings and done nothing else, left some slab there, left the dirt there, that would have required the stormwater management action and also the soil mitigation? You couldn't have just left it as a dirt lot to pull boats in and out of?
Commissioner Jordan, I believe that is correct. If you disturb 500 square feet, you generally trigger tier-three stormwater. There are some exceptions-
Well, I'm asking, so is that, that, so the disturb is the key word there?
Correct.
So I just take a building down and-
Even though it was impermeable, and it remains impermeable-
Yeah.
That's, it's still a change of 500 square feet.
Okay, because when I look around in that area and see where the boats are, that's literally what they're sitting in, you know, decayed, decrepit old properties that you can just pull a boat in and out of, so, but it truly triggered that. Okay, and then, Ms. Collins, I just have a couple of questions for you. When you talked about future uses and not treading on the compatibility, did you say building C would be storage, right?
Correct.
So there's not an interior second floor in there?
There, this is actually a better, no, there's not. I'm hearing from the architect, no, there is not.
Okay, those are architectural windows treatments, huh? Okay, very nice. Okay, and then-
The ERV liked it.
Having nothing to do on the bearing, but just jumped out at me, too. So you built a new building, you're in the worst flood zone, you certainly would have an elevation certificate and raise the building above whatever the requirement is for half a million dollars' worth of flood coverage, or you think you're paying $20,000? Just jumps out at me because of my day job, so-
Okay, an insurance question.
So who gave you that number, and is that really true, or?
So I think that's actually what we are paying now. Is that correct?
Okay.
You have to come up here, because this is a public hearing, so we can't hear you if you're there.
Okay, this is the owner, owner Mark Rabat.
It has, the $20,000 has no bearing on it at all, but I'm just, my experience down in that area is that's a big premium for a brand-new building. So, but I'll just take your nod. It's okay, no, it's all right.
Okay, yes.
I just, when you give, when you start putting stuff in there, it just makes me ask questions when I see something I don't like, and I wouldn't want to avoid a question that seemed off to me. So if you say yes, I believe it's yes, and that's the only questions I have. Thank you.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jordan. Commissioner Lodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A question for staff. The staff report says that about half of this M1 zone is in, sorry, is city uses, D-South Plant, the wastewater treatment plant, and so on. Do we know how much of it is in conforming uses?
Commissioner Lodge, we have an analysis that was done as part of the general plan, where they went and looked at what all the existing uses were in all the buildings. We haven't done the math to figure out what percentage of the uses are actually conforming. It's a fairly small percent, just from eyeballing it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lodge. I just had a couple of questions, quick questions, I think. First of all, to Commissioner Campanella's line of questioning about, really, the special findings we have to make, and number two, no present and no future demand for ocean-dependent or ocean-related uses. Have we ever, can someone answer this? Have we ever conditioned a CUP with a time limit? So in the, so at some future date, that can be reevaluated?
Chair Wiscom, no, and that's not something the CUPs are, continue until there's a change in use, and that's the, what we grant to them.
Okay, so, okay, thank you for that. I figured that was the answer, but I just wanted to make sure. And then I just had a question. This might be from Mr. Arnold, I don't know. There was a, in the report, there was a reference to Suite 11 at the Vercal Building that was available for over a year for $1.05 a square foot, and finally rented for $0.77 a square foot. I was just wondering, what was the space? How big was it? Is there any relationship to, it was termed an office suite, so... And I'm not trying to jog your memory on something, I just, you know, are we, are we similar, or is it just an office suite?
I'm not sure that I can specifically answer your question, but I don't know if you're aware of the Vercal Building, but it's a huge property with a lot of space, and this is a typical rental in the Vercal Building. Most of the rents in there are in the $0.75 to $1.00 a square foot range. And I think that says something about the demand for ocean-related uses, because those are rents that are affordable to ocean-related uses as far as we can tell, and there's not, there's just not much of any ocean-related uses in the Vercal Building or anywhere else in the district.
Yeah, well, I guess my, to my point, or my point would be to what your response is, is that, is, I mean, the, you know, we, we've seen a email that, or that went to their report, a staff report that went to the Harbor Commission about the Commercial Fishermen Subcommittee, which, and I did visit these sites, they need big spaces, they don't need an office suite. So that's why, that's why I asked for, are we comparing apples to oranges here when we talk about that?
I don't think that, that the suite referred to would be adequate for the commercial fishermen to park their boats and store their equipment. They're paying on the right property an equivalent of $0.26 per square foot for the site, or $140 per space in the area. And they have high efficiency because the whole area is accessible from the outside, so they don't need interior space for moving around.
Correct, yes, okay. Thank you, thank you for the answer to that. I'm just seeing if I have any other questions. No, I think, I think that's it for now. Okay, I don't see any other lights on, so let's move on to public comment. We have one speaker's slip from Anna Marie Gott, and you'll get two minutes here, and then after Ms. Gott, we are going to go back to Commissioner deliberations and, oh, we do have more speakers. Ah, okay, we have one more. Followed by Brad, Anna Marie Gott will be followed by Brad Froling. Okay, are you ready to go, Ms. Gott?
I need a second, I need to put this on the overhead.
Oh, okay. Ms. Rydel, do you know how to do that? Can you, oh, there it is. Okay, great. Thank you, okay.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I want to point out something. In a brochure for marketing this particular location, if you actually looked at it, I think it was on page three, you would find this photo. If you take a look, there are two boats that are actually stored in that location. That image was taken in 2010. You saw images after they purchased the property and cleaned it up. If you take a look at the Coastal Act, Section 30234, it says, "Facilities serving the commercial fishing and recreational boating industries shall be protected and where feasible upgraded." Existing commercial fishing, I'm sorry, existing commercial fishing and recreational boating harbor space shall not be reduced unless demand for those facilities no longer exist or adequate substitute space is found, can be found, can be provided. I think we still have a need for it. It doesn't look like there's any additional spaces that have been provided. It doesn't look actually like this particular project should have ever been purchased by the owners, because they overpaid. They didn't do their due diligence when they purchased the property to find out what was, what it was going to take to actually build. And they removed actual storage facility for boats when they purchased the property, which was a no-no under the Coastal Act. This property owner also received a letter in March, excuse me, from the April meeting for the planning, for the City Council. If you take a look at my letter, the, one of the owners went and visited Ryan over at Lovelace, and he actually was blown away by the amount of money that Ryan paid for his business in terms of rent. He asked him not to get involved with the CUP.
You'll need to wrap up, thanks.
And if you take a look at the rest of my letter, I think that you would find all of the evidence that you need, where you cannot make the findings because there's demand, there are individuals that can pay higher rents, and we really should not be forgiving or ignoring our zoning ordinances or the actual requirements that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Froling? Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, Commissioners, thanks for your time today. Brad Froling, so I've been marketing the property for almost a year and a half for lease to marine uses, and the best way to describe it is as someone like Mark telling my girls, my two daughters, that they can still run a unicorn at this time. I'm a 20-year slip holder in the harbor, I'm a boater, I'm an enthusiast, I know commercial fishermen. Right now, there's no demand. In fact, Bob Chuler, who's leased the building next door for 30-some-odd years, has never had an inquiry, let alone a tenant, and there's a letter in the file from Carolyn Parks, who's managed the property to that same effect for 10 years. So what we're trying to protect, and by the way, people were living in those boats. They bought the property for $1.4 million and took on huge liability environmentally, and I walked the site with them years ago, and they talked about band-aiding. As a lot of properties are in town, you see these old shanty towns that look like they're third world, the reason owners don't come and improve them is because of all that's happened to these owners. So we walked that site, and they said, you know what, let's take the high road, let's clean up the environmental, let's place new buildings here, and they've been bludgeoned for years. It's not months, or it's, it's years that they've been bludgeoned by this process. You all approved this before, now we've got this, and I understand all the legal hiccup related to the filing and the Coastal Commission, but it's a lot of nonsense, and people watch this in town and talk about it, and they go the other way. So when we have an opportunity to do something, take the high road, this is a CUP, we're not bifurcating the future marine uses. There's other buildings in town, and by the way, if the demand is such in the future, there'll be buildings, and they can rent buildings. Right now, there's no demand. If there was, I wouldn't be standing here. It's, it's an old conversation. So hopefully today, what I believe is, is very much logic will prevail and support them, and they still have got a load to carry with the Coastal Commission, and it's, I can't tell you the number of local business people that have seen this, and just, it's just, it's unbelievable what they've been through. So appreciate your time, and that's it.
Thank, thank you very much. Thank you. You know, you're done with the presentation.
Can I quickly respond to one thing that Ms. Gott mentioned?
You really out of time, actually, you maybe had 30 seconds left or something, so go ahead.
So just because there is a boat on the property, which, by the way, the cabinet-maker was living in, does not make the property not legal non-conforming. That property, you saw all sorts of automobiles and other things, it was a cabinet-maker, it was all legal non-conforming.
Thank you. Okay, great. Okay, it's back to the Commission. Yes? Yes, oh, I'm sorry, yes, let me, let me read into, let me read into the record, the written correspondence. We've received a letter from Carolyn Groves with the, she's a coastal program analyst with the California Coastal Commission, a letter from William Railing with some attachments, and a letter from Anna Marie Gott. Did I get them all? Oh, yes, I'm sorry, and I, you know, I wrote these down, and now I can't find it, but yes, and, and a letter from, let me get the name of, the name of your firm, if I can find the letter again. It's here. Thank you. Okay, a letter from Beth Collins at Brownstein Hyatt Farber &amp; Schreck. Thank you. So that's all the correspondence, so we're going to close public comment. It's back to the Commission. If my Commissioners would just bear with me for one sec, I forgot to ask one question. If, if I may, would you indulge me one question? There was, in Mr. Railing's letter, there was a reference to how the parking lot was laid out, in that one parking space that overlapped another parking space. I just wondered if, if someone could, could comment on that?
Chair Wiscom, I don't have a diagram showing that, but I think the confusing part was that the parking space width was labeled at the bottom, which made it look like the parking space, that one space extended into another, but if you actually measure what the 20-foot depth would be, the two spaces don't conflict.
Okay, so both can be utilized simultaneously? Okay, because his letter said they couldn't. Okay. Okay, because his letter said they couldn't, okay, I just wanted to clarify that, thank you. Okay, so it's to the commission, and Commissioner Jordan?
Jump off, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to commend the applicant and also provide my sympathy that you're here again. But I think you've done nothing to lessen the process from when you were here before, you've provided additional information. I think the, in particular, the appraisal or assessment work that you guys did just continues to bolster the case that, at this time and place, there is not a customer for even just a blank piece of land down there, given the, given the current rental market. So I'm not going to have any problem approving the project and making the findings, and as long as staff is okay with the revised findings, those. I still find the use to be compatible with an OM1 zone use. I think the, the evidence that you brought with you from before and have added to is still competent, it's objective, and it shows no feasible economic value. You don't preclude future use of OM1 if the world turns around and the fishing market goes crazy and all of a sudden they have money to spend. I agree with you also, the comments you made on your environmental improvements, that, that whole area is just a festering environmental hotspot, and again, I don't think that it really bears to the decision today, but the fact that somebody was willing to actually make improvements on a dilapidated parcel and then bring it up to today's standards environmentally deserves something. And so I have no problem approving the project and making the findings. I would continue, I think, my comments from before, that the most distressing thing in this decision or dynamic is, is, I guess, the lack of the city's proactive role in this zone in looking for ways to initially have some numbers, like what's really there, what's on the ground, what's not on the ground, tracking the erosion over time, so in the last five years, how many have either happened with the CUP or happened to change hands, and they've gone from the same non-conforming use to a new non-conforming use without having to pony up to meet the goal, and just looking for some, I mean, the issue is certainly there, and it's certainly there in terms of not office space, but it is in terms of larger space on parcels where they, they have ample room for varying sizes of boats, they have ample room for those storage containers to store their gear, and eventually they have processing space and reefer or freezer space, and, and we have, this is again, another one of those contradictory type of situations in city policy where we, we say we want this, but then we provide an out, clearly an out, and recognize it, and we really ought to just decide which one we really want, and, and get with incentivizing or subsidizing to get to that goal, or just giving up on that, that whole zone there and let people make their plans. So I'd still like to just get on that soapbox and say, I think we need to, to avoid situations like this and play a more proactive role in, in meeting the, the goals of that zone or get out of those goals, one or the other. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Jordan. Commissioner Campanella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will also be able to make the findings for the CUP and the CDP for many of the reasons that were just mentioned. I think, you know, the investment that was made, if we do expect people to make investment, and if we do expect adapting to what's going on, not only because of code, but also because of sea level rise, et cetera, I think you have to assume that somebody needs a return on that investment, otherwise it's not going to occur. So I also, the only caution I have is what I mentioned before, I feel good that the future demand language is not from Coastal Commission, but from our own municipal code, which we have some latitude towards interpreting, but I would, I guess, I would not feel comfortable if this future demand or this comment is challenged that we didn't really know what we were doing when we made this decision. So let me try to define future in my own mind relative to what's before us on the items that we have to find. No feasible economic value, that's at the beginning. So if I go to the end, objective, okay, not it's going to be good someday, but objective, and we don't have objective evidence that it will be in demand. So there's no present or future value, and to me, future value, you need to discount to the present, okay? You can't wait for something to be valuable, so if there was going to be a demand in five years or 10 years, you say, what's the value of that today when you do your feasibility analysis? And if it's not realistic from what we can see to be handled in a very short period of time versus generating revenue now, it's not financially feasible, okay? So I don't think we can depend on future value for that reason, and I feel comfortable looking at the financial feasibility today on what could be done in the future. Those OM1 uses can come in, but it's not going to affect the financial feasibility as it would if we're waiting for it to occur sometime in the future. So I think I'm comfortable with making the findings for that reason, and I think it's defensible if, you know, someone were to challenge, challenge whether future, we really know the facts or not. I feel we do, in reasonless by making a judgment on what's financially feasible or not, and I think it's financially infeasible to assume boatyard or some other use OM1 at this state. So as I said, I'm going to find for both the CUP and CDP. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Campanella. I don't see any other lights on, I don't, Commissioner Thompson, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I also support the project, I supported it in January, I support it now, there's been no new data or information provided that would change what we all decided in January, other than further economic data that supports the infeasibility of any other uses in the property. You know, this whole situation highlights one of the reasons why properties of all types are so expensive here in the South Coast and throughout California, when we have to deal with the bureaucracy that's in place that prevents things from happening rather than encouraging and helping things to happen. The property owners spent a lot of assets to remediate a really badly contaminated site, and now things like the Coastal Commission staff want to penalize them for doing that, and that's, that's insane. And that's why this state has a problem with the cost of properties if we continue on this path. I find it's easy to make the conditional use permit findings. The use is compatible. Look up the definition of compatible, it doesn't say that it enhances or anything, it just says it doesn't conflict with ocean-related. It doesn't say that it has to be somehow or another enhancing ocean-related items, it just says it doesn't conflict with it. And we all know that the other finding about feasible economic value has been more than proven, so I, I don't have a problem with moving to approve the project, making the findings in the staff report, and subjecting the conditions of approval in A, including the revised ones provided, as long as the staff has vetted them.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson, yes.
Staff has reviewed the revised findings, and we can support them.
Yeah, thank you. You're talking about the ones in the, in the letter from?
Yes, in Ms. Collins' letter.
That's the ones I was referring to.
Yes, I just, I'm just really stating that for the record, I'm not asking a question. Okay, Commissioner Higgins?
Well, thank you for handling this with extra diligence and meeting with staff, coastal staff, and providing additional information in the record. It seems tedious, but I think you're handling it the right way, certainly making very convincing arguments that essentially doing nothing is, is also still impossible in the city and in the coastal zone, so. With respect to how the findings are made, and the definition of future does not say infinity, it just says in the future, and if we get outside of 10 years and something dramatically changes, you know, the city has land, maybe, maybe inappropriate, you know, analogy or construct, but the city, when it, when it recognizes a problem and the shortage of real estate for particularly use like affordable housing, sometimes the city steps up and provides that land, so if that were to happen in the future with ocean-related uses, it's nice to know there's some land available down there for that. So I, with respect to the findings, I think they're really detailed, and I don't want to do finding by committee up here, but I don't know that they're, you know, that necessarily, that necessarily include that much. Sometimes we take findings and recite back to what's in the staff report with all that detail, but without bogging, bogging that down here today, I'll still support the project and the findings.
So do you support the, the additional findings?
I do, I'm just making a comment that I don't think they're totally necessary.
Okay.
But I don't want to bog it down here.
Right, okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Higgins. Commissioner Lodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do want to say that there is a need for this kind of use, and I certainly agree with, you know, and the city's local coastal plan provides for it, and the Coastal Commission does too, but the economics just aren't there, and I'm not sure that the difficulties of city processing makes the land more costly. You'd think it'd make them go down, actually. And this has turned out to be, I think, almost a case of, you know, no good deed goes unpunished. So I too could support the findings to be made for the CUP and the CDP.
And the, the additional ones in the, in Ms. Collins' letter? Yeah, okay, great, thank you. Okay, I also am in support, this has been a year and a half of marketing the property since April of 2018, and a very thorough economic feasibility study by Mr. Arnold, which I think, you know, you just, you can't dispute. I totally agree, we have, we, you know, we have commercial fishermen, we want a commercial fishing industry here, we have a really viable one, they're a great bunch of people, they're hardworking, they're passionate about what they do, they're passionate about sustainability, just the, just the type of industry we want, and they are having a hard time finding space. I have toured their facilities, and it's, you know, I hope, I know that, that city staff is working hard to identify sites, probably not in the OM1 zone, because it's, it's pretty tapped out. We have, you know, 50% of it is, is city-owned and not going to change, and we've, we have two other CUPS that were issued in the OM1 zone for other projects, and so I, and I know that they're broadening their, their outlook to the, to the M1 zone, and hopefully we're going to someday come to a resolution of that before it becomes a crisis, because, because we don't want to lose that industry. That being said, I, I commend the owners of this property for sticking it out this long. This has been just a one thing after another type operation. I, I wanted to ask a question, Ms. Collins, when you spoke with, you mentioned reference to speaking with Coastal Commission staff, is, was it Ms. Groves that you were working with?
Ms. Groves and Steve Hudson, and yes, the whole team.
Okay, great, I just, I was, that was just more curiosity than anything, because Ms. Groves has been the one that's been writing the letters about that, so, okay. And the only other thing I want to say is, because we have to make these special findings, Commissioner Thompson alluded to one of them, I just, I want to kind of give my take, and I think it was the last time we did this, it was our take on what these things mean. And one is the use is compatible with ocean-dependent, ocean-related uses, and as Commissioner Thompson said, compatibility is basically coexistence without conflict. So we all up here are saying, this is a use that, that can coexist without conflict. And then on number two, or I think it's 6B actually, but this finding shall be substantiated by competent evidence. And I know that Ms. Ostringer said at the last hearing, and I'll just repeat it for this hearing, that competent means relevant and reliable evidence, and we have received that to a very great extent today. So I think, I think those are important points to make. Hopefully, this will just, you guys can take your permit and get to work and not worry about it, but, so, I think, but I commend you at least, you've done the right thing with the site, and it's unfortunate that it's been such a nightmare. So with that, I would certainly entertain a motion, it looks like we're unanimous.
I have a motion on the floor already.
Oh, did you make it?
Yep.
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry, was it seconded?
I'll second it.
Okay. Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I missed that part, I thought you were just giving comments. Okay, so we have a motion to approve the coastal development permit and conditional use permit with the additional findings and the, additional findings in the letter dated September 19th, 2019, provided by Ms. Collins from Brownstein Hyatt Farber and Shrek. Okay, and it's Commissioner Thompson's motion, seconded by Commissioner Jordan. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that carries unanimously, thank you very much. Okay. Yes, I am announcing the 10-day appeal period for Planning Commission's decision today. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to item number four, A1, this is committee and liaison report, staff hearing officer liaison report.
Nothing out of the ordinary to report, I can go right to Water if you want.
Sure.
If I can read my notes. Water Commission met today, and the two discussion items were, one regarding what's called suspended Table A, state water, which years ago, we, we suspended our right to about 12,000 acre-feet of water a year out of the state water project, which of course, you have to remember that 12,000 doesn't really mean 12,000, because we never get 100% of what we're allocated. And there's a discussion underway to, that's going to counsel on whether to ask for it back, and we received an extensive report today on our water portfolio, how we get it, where we get it, what it costs, and the recommendation is going to be to not request that back. And the second part of that conversation had to do with the, what is now the process moving forward up in the Delta with a single tunnel option, rather than the dual tunnels that were proposed by Governor Brown, and our city is a member with a group that has to make a decision for the initial expense of starting to plan that, and that is also a recommendation from staff and Water Commission to, or from staff and Water Commission to counsel, that we not participate at this time because of the uncertainties of where, whether that project will even be built, where it's going, or what, what will happen with it. So there will be an opportunity to come back into that project later. And then the other item, the other items, that was one item, the other item today is we had an extensive review of current water legislation at the state level, and how it is being formulated, adopted, and coming down to cities, and there's pages and pages of that, of course, because it's water, and that would bore you with all the reporting on that, but let's just say that I think between Governor Newsom and his staff on, his new appointee to the State Water Board, his new appointee to the Natural Resources something, something group, and also to the Cal EPA position, there's three new appointees there at cabinet level, is they are all just intensely interested in water across the whole state, which is actually really good. And so there continues to be legislation and interest at that level of the government on continuing to work on our, our water resources.
Thank you, Commissioner Jordan. Commissioner Campanella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had mentioned to our attending Thank you, Madam Chair. I had mentioned to our attending commissioners at lunch, I was part of a walking tour at the Association of, the American Planning Association Conference that occurred over last, last weekend into Tuesday. And Renee Brook and myself accompanied a gentleman from a firm that is looking at the missing middle, if you will, but designed product for multiple families to live in, but look, really blends in with the community that they're being placed in. And I had not really spent time walking around Ortega up to Mission Street between Chapala and the freeway, watching him give examples between the little cottage courtyards and other properties that you really couldn't tell that there were multiple families in it unless you looked at the number of the mailboxes that were there. There were 41 planning commissioners and planning staff on the tour, and they were very impressed about how historically we have provided that type of housing. So what I did want to do, though, is just let, let people know if they are going around that area, there are three projects that are completed under the AUD program, medium high, and maybe take a look at it and see how you would evaluate whether they accomplished blending in or not. They came out of our design board, ABR. That's 316 West Mitchell Arena, 316 Mitchell Arena, 1623 De Lavina. It's an L-shaped project that also exits onto Castillo. Got creative in retaining two historical structures. And then 1818 Castillo Street. So 1818 Castillo Street is the last one. So those are three that are done. Just take a look, see if, if they were successfully implemented through the great work that our design boards do and working with applicants. Also attended some sessions at the conference, housing state laws, et cetera, and I think we're pretty familiar with those and know there's more coming down as far as Housing Accountability Act and different updates. I think we need, as we start to look at potential changes in our housing policy, I think we need to make sure with staff and our city attorney that we're, we're in compliance with what's there, and maybe just anticipate a little bit what might be coming down the line as well. Usually, that's when it happens, it happens. But right now, we know that there's, there are different methodologies required of our arena allocation that'll come up, and there was a session on that in the sixth cycle that'll be coming up. We'll be preparing a couple of years from now. So I think we have to anticipate that as well. Reach out to those experts that have analyzed it already for you municipalities that have already submitted their sixth cycle, including San Luis Obispo, which had a pretty significant increase in the requirements. So even though it's down the road, the advice of these experts were start early, and just look at potentially where you may need to find additional housing opportunity, given what's coming up three, four years from now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Campanella. Commissioner Lodge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Campanella and I both attended the four-hour-long training session on Friday for the Architectural Board of Review, Historic Landmarks Commission, and the Single Family Design Review Board. And staff went through all of the processes and trying to make sure that everything goes smoothly and so on. There was frustration expressed by at least one of the ABR members about not having enough support from staff. And one thing that is going to, and, and, you know, and this thing that's been going, well, as long as I've been involved, which is like over 40 years now, we're at these boards, you know, they come to the meeting, and the architect comes in and rolls out the plans, and, you know, and they then have to start talking about, you know, it's the first time they've seen it. George Buell announced at the meetings that starting October 1st, the plans will be available online before the meetings, and this will be the first time ever. So that, that was great news as far as I was concerned. But I, I think most of the people in attendance found it helpful. Thank you.
No, I want to compliment Ms. Ostringer for doing a real good presentation, keeping people focused, and considering a lot of aspects, including streamlined permitting process and other considerations, state law as well, but also allowing adequate time to hear and get feedback from all of the design board members, which was a, a pretty good coordination. And I compliment you on that meeting. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Just a couple quick updates. Sea Level Rise Adaptation Subcommittee, we met for the first time in, I think, since January last week, and we talked about the processes moving forward. And there is a draft document that's due to the Coastal Commission under the grant terms, due to the Coastal Commission at the end of the year. So you're going to have to, you're going to see some more activity on the sea level rise component in the very near future. So, and I also attended the Downtown Parking Committee meeting. And just quickly, the Parking and Business Improvement Area, PBIA, there's an assessment methodology that's being performed by Walker Consultants right now. It's got five parts to it, but, but they're basically, they're taking the baseline assumptions of the PBIA that were developed in 1965. That's even 20 years before the OM1 zone came on. And they're, they're reevaluating the financial model to make sure that it, it supports downtown access and economic vitality. So we may see some changes as that progresses throughout the steps. They're at the first step of doing surveys, I think, and then it's going to progress onward. So we will probably get a, a nicer report on the PBIA and what's going on there at some point at Downtown Parking and, and at City Council. And, and just, they also talk briefly about, they are, have developed a process to remove the nuisance signage, particularly in the funk zone, the signage that's there illegally about no parking, et cetera. They, they specifically talked about Gray Avenue having quite a bit of that, of that signage. So you'll start to see some perhaps removal, and then two weeks later, put back up. But I don't, who knows? So, so that's it. And with that, thank you very much to all, and our meeting is adjourned.